What do you think? It's Rod's fault?
No, actually it's Gary's.
Gary's?
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, and this is a Moscow City Council meeting. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. Okay, I'm going to start this evening off with a proclamation, and it is POW MIA Recognition Day proclamation. This is something that is very dear to me. Whereas in 1979, Congress passed a resolution authorizing the observance of National POW MIA Recognition Day, and whereas that national observance now takes place annually on the third Friday of September, this year on September 18th, and whereas since 2011, the state of Idaho has required that the POW MIA flag be flown continuously over state buildings until missing members of the armed services return, and whereas Navy, Air Force, and Army ROTC units from the University of Idaho and Washington State University hold an annual recognition ceremony to honor prisoners and former prisoners of war and those missing in action, and whereas the University of Idaho will host this formal ceremony at 3:30 PM on Friday, September 18th, at the Shattuck Amphitheater, and whereas the University of Idaho will recognize Military Appreciation Day at its football game on September 19th, and whereas Americans are grateful for the sacrifices of heroes and of loved ones who may not know the fate of missing members of the armed forces, and whereas it is appropriate to pay tribute to personnel who have never returned from combat in distant lands, to those who suffered as prisoners of war, and to all members of the military who have defended our country, and to whereas the Department of Defense continues to search archives, explore foreign battlefields, burial sites, interview witnesses, and otherwise seek information about those missing from the Vietnam War, Korean War, Cold War, World War II, and other conflicts. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, the Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim September 18th, 2015, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Moscow, and I urge all residents to observe that day of honor and remembrance with appropriate activities, including the ROTC ceremony at the University of Idaho. And with that, folks, I have a proclamation I have with us this evening. UFI Veterans Advisor, retired Lieutenant Colonel from the US Marine Corps, Dan Button, and Dan, I'd like to present this to you and have you say a few words, sir.
Okay, sure.
Sure.
Okay, sure.
If you'd like to give us a few words here, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, first off, Mayor, council members, citizens, thank you very much for this opportunity, and frankly, honor for me to be able to join you briefly tonight in honor of National POW MIA Recognition Day, which we're celebrating on the national day, as you mentioned, a week from this Friday, onboard the campus at the Shattuck Amphitheater, which is a small, I wouldn't call it intimate, but it's a fairly small natural amphitheater outdoors behind War Memorial Gymnasium, also known as MEMGym, if you've ever been on campus, the old historic building, which used to be the basketball venue right there in the center of campus. So, again, all citizens, the community, the broader Palouse are encouraged to join us on that day. The only thing I can't do is hook anybody up with a Parkin pass, and Parkin's a bugger on campus. I apologize, but you can get a one-day visitors permit, and everybody's encouraged to attend. On behalf of President Chuck Staben and the rest of the administrators, faculty, staff, and most of all, our ROTC cadre, our cadets, midshipmen in those three very strong ROTC programs, our veterans, we have a fairly large number of veterans attending, our uniformed military guard and reservists, 25 National Guardsmen from this area just back last weekend, a week ago, a whole week late, but had been down at the National Training Center in Fort Irwin, California, 118 degrees doing their summer training, came back. I'm incredibly proud of all the folks we have in uniform continuing to serve, and then, of course, our veterans who we continue to receive from the last 13 years of conflict. But again, thank you very much for this honor. I have the privilege of actually reading this. I'll be dressed up a little nicer for the ceremony, but a week from Friday, I'll be a part of the ceremony and will be able to share this with everybody in attendance. So, thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome. And Lieutenant Colonel, my humble apologies, because I will not be there, because I'll be en route back from Washington DC, as you well know, so if you would please apologize for all those that are there on my behalf, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will go on to the next thing, which is the presentation of funds for the Mayor's Golf Tournament. Eric Newell, please, if you would come up. This was kind of a fun thing for me, folks, so. Caused by this guy right here, he gets the kudos for making this all happen.
A lot of problems around here. So, on August 14th, we had our inaugural Mayor's Golf Tournament hosted by Mayor Lambert at the University of Idaho Golf Course, and in the process of coming up with this program, we decided that, and actually, Mayor Lambert decided the best place to allocate the proceeds to this would be to Alternative Violence of the Palouse. And so, we have two representatives of Alternative Violence of the Palouse. We have Jill Wal- no, Jill Crump and Kristin Wall here. So, if you guys would come up, please, we'd like to present you with a check, Mayor Lambert. This year, we, being the first year out of the gates, we were able to
Ta-da!
But we're able to raise $1,650 to Alternative Violence of the Palouse, and so Mayor hop in there.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of Mayor
Very good.
So, thank you.
And here is, this is real.
So, real one. We also wanted to just do a save the date. Next year, August 12th, we'll be having our next event. To be determined where it will be at, but more than likely the University of Idaho Golf Course again. So, please put it on your calendars now for next August 12th for some rousing good times. And with that, I'll turn it over to Christine.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, thank you very much for choosing us. We feel very honored. It was a fun day, so if anyone is a golfer, knows golfers, please spread the word, because that's a lot of money for a local charity, and we really do appreciate it. That money will go directly to helping survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, right here in Moscow. We are 35 years old this year, and I do want to bore you with a few facts, because they're so exciting. So, for the last, over the last 10 years, we have provided over 30,000 hotline calls. We work with volunteers from the University of Idaho, WSU, and both communities, and so we run that 24-hour hotline. We have a savings of $67,000 a year by using volunteers. So, that is a fantastic service that we are able to respond over the phone or in person to people in need. We have provided services, we've advocated for, we've given support and advice to over 3,600 survivors in the last 10 years. Over 2,200 community programs, and our community programs are expanding all the time. We are very happy to report that we are in the school systems. In particular, in Moscow, we're working with two high schools with a brand-new grant that we've got. I'm always on the lookout to bring more money into the community. I don't mind how many Ts I have to cross, Is I've got to dot. If I can bring that money locally, I will do. And I'm very happy to say that we have a healthy program, a healthy budget, clean audits every year for as long as I can remember, quickly, touch wood. We have a great shelter program that Jill runs. We housed 62 individuals last year, and we work really closely with all the resources around to help people find jobs, go back to school, get kids in school, all kinds of things. So, this money is very welcome and will help a lot of people. So, thank you very much. [applause]
As I stated earlier, the Mayor's Golf Tournament was an absolute success, and Eric Newell can take kudos for that, because he's the one, him and his team, that got the whole thing lined up and did a wonderful job of managing it. So, thank you very much, Eric. And this was a fun thing, and as he had mentioned, August 12th of next year, and that'd be terrific. University of Idaho would be a great place to do it again. So, with that, I'll move on to the next thing, which is the consent agenda. Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, a motion by Dan, the second by John. Walter?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would note that Item B, the council was given a changed site lease agreement between the City of Moscow and Conteria Ultra-Broadband. There was one reference on the first page earlier to attaching to a communications tower, when in fact, it's attaching to one of our water towers. So, that correction has been made and presented to the council from what was in the packet. Secondly, I will support the consent agenda, but I will need to abstain from voting on Item E in the consent agenda, the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust funding request. I am a consultant to the MAHT and have a conflict of interest with that item, so my vote in the affirmative will not include Item E.
Okay, so take note of that. Thank you, Walter, that Walter abstained from Item Number E, Stephanie, the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust funding request. And with that, and then noted the change that was made as well.
And while I'll vote for the consent agenda, I also will be abstaining actually from Item A, which is approval of the previous meeting since I wasn't here, but I will approve the rest of it.
Okay, and Stephanie, you take note of that too as well. Wayne will abstain from consent agenda, number A. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, and we will move on. Thank you. Okay. Staff recognition report. Gary, read them, sir.
Your Honor, I've asked Dwight Curtis to handle that tonight.
Okay. Dwight, please come in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Well, I was going to get up here and talk a lot about me, but it would have been really short. So, what I would like to talk about tonight is what we have is one of our staff members attended what they call the National Recreation and Park Association's Director's School, and it's a two-year program. You have to go one year, take a certain amount of courses there, and then you have a year of homework, and then you go back the second year and go through the grueling process to finish up. And if we could have Eric Newell come up, he is the recent graduate of this school, and if I could, I just have a few little things here to read, so I get it right. The Director's School is a, it's a two-year exclusive professional development opportunity designed to prepare new and potential directors of parks and recreation agencies for the challenges of leading and managing effectively. Potential attendees must first apply, then they have to be recommended before they're even considered for acceptance. So, there's a waiting list to get on this, and it's, there's certain requirements to even be considered. Of course, just about anything you can imagine to manage a department in a government is what they cover. And they identify qualities of the good managers, they develop the skills, develop proficiencies in designing and implementing agency strategic plans, which would make Gary very happy. They build improved leadership skills, evaluate and identify legal responsibilities and implications, and performance management systems, personnel management, overall success of agency, agencies themselves, and of course, program prioritization and maximizing positive impacts on the communities, plus about a billion other things. And anyway, he took the two years, and he's completed it, and from all accounts, this is quite an achievement, and a lot of the larger cities require this of their people before they're allowed to hire them as directors. So, it's a, it's a big deal. So, if I could present this. Now, Eric has already gotten this, and we stole it off his wall.
[laughing]
But this is the plaque that he received. Weighs about five pounds, so.
So, you know it's good.
[laughing]
Congratulations, Eric, for your hard work and efforts. And that's part of the thing in this city. We've got a number of city employees throughout our city that does various credentials to make themselves more professional than in the areas and the jobs and the responsibilities that they have. And so, boy, as the mayor of this town, I certainly appreciate that, and so thank you very much for your extra effort in doing that. Okay, Dwight, you still have the podium, so we will talk about the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, well, thank you. I have the privilege tonight to introduce Nancy Tribble. She's the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission on her second-year stint of this, and as all the commissions do, we'll give you an annual report on what took place in this case in 2015, and here's Nancy.
Good evening. I'm just going to do a brief review on the Parks and Rec Commission. These are our members, Damon and Justin and me.
Did you catch a big fish, Nancy?
Actually, not that one, but honestly, it's a whole nother story. I have caught a fish that big, and I landed it. You know, when you fish, you learn the difference between catching and landing.
I think you had him that big in Hoarderman's Pond.
[laughing] I've caught, I've landed very few. We have Susan, and Arch, and Ted, and Robbie, and Jacqueline, who is our Vice Chair, and Mark. And I'll read our mission statement, and then I'm just going to brief through the rest of the PowerPoint. This department, in partnership with our citizens, enriches Moscow's quality of life by providing well-designed and properly maintained parks and recreational opportunities for all citizens. Services include deployment and maintenance, development, I'm sorry, includes development and maintenance of parks and community, forestry, recreational sports facilities, playgrounds, trails, open spaces, and city office buildings, in addition to offering a vast array of individual and group recreation programs. And I would like to just add that when my husband and I were looking at relocating in the mid-2000s, we knew we'd be leaving Oregon, and we're trying to decide, well, where, where do we want to go? It took us about two years to do a little, to do research. And actually, it's the Parks Commission, and the way Moscow has such a nice balance between development and its green spaces, that, that's the main reason we moved here. So, our 2015 commission goals is developing our partnership. We're working on a Parks and Recreation Foundation. Our vacancies are full. We annually review our master plan, and we are working on going to joint commission meetings, the tree commission pathways, so we get out and see what other, other commissions are doing, and inviting them to ours. Our issues and projects, we've, as you can see, we're naming parks and helping developers and people coming in, and they have questions and ideas for, for parks. We're helping with that. Designs, reviewed and recommended design for downtown bathroom facility. We have an annual Parks and Facilities tour, and we review issues concerning the aquatic center, maintenance, the roof, and things that need to be taken care of for maintenance. We reviewed our scholarship policy. We recommended our updated scholarship program be implemented, and that it stays the way it is right now. It seems to be working quite well. Our master plan, we've implemented the Cycle Cross Course, which was developed in 2015, and completion of the installation of the tot lots on East City Park and Rotary Park. We've got Otteness Park up and going, and it's nice to see people down there playing, ongoing with the Moscow School District Development for the ball fields, monitoring the off-leash out of Mountain View Park, charter schools, keeping our, reviewed and recommended full commission status for the pathway commissions, and we participated in the 2015 commission. We had our, our grand opening for the Otteness Park, which was really nice. It's so needed down there, and the community members are really enjoying it. Some of 2016 issues and projects. We will continue the 2013 master plan. We will continue to monitor the youth scholarship program. We will continue to update our City Parks and Facility Historical Guide, Lola Clyde Milton, and the off-leash policy for Mountain View Park. These are just some of our, our challenges, and we're continuing to work with, review and make recommendations for future dog parks, because the one we have is really overloaded, and review and recommendations for parkland declaration policies, and for addressing parks and facility accessibility issues, as well as recommendations for possible slack lining policies. Any questions?
Nancy, that was a nice opening to Otteness Park that we had, and I always had, I always wondered about these big scissors you use to cut ribbons and things. I thought it was always kind of a fake thing. I'm just being honest now, folks, but they really do work.
Are they sharp?
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of surprised. It sliced right through, and I thought to myself, because I always had it in the back of my head, there's got to be something kind of fake about that, but it's not. It's a real thing. Well, thank you for the presentation, Walter.
Yes, sir.
All right. What is slack lining?
Ah, right.
You were wanting somebody to ask.
I was. In fact, I kind of raced right by that, and I figured someone would probably ask. Slack lining is when a ni- typically made from nylon, it's maybe about four inches wide, like a rope, but it's, it's wide and flat, and people use it, it's kind of like a come-along, where it tightens around the trees, which it's, slack lining's been going on in a lot of other parks, and it has been deemed by the majority of the, for people who oversee the trees, arborists and so forth, that when done properly, it does not damage the trees on the right tree, the right type of bark. And then people walk on them. So, it's maybe about 18 inches high, and it's actually addressed
Art knows all about it, apparently.
Yeah.
It's like tightrope walking, but without the tight.
But it's slack.
But it's kind of floppy.
Yeah.
And you're only 18 inches off the ground, too, which is a good
Well, it can be low, it can be a little bit higher, but it has been up and coming. It's been around a lot of other parks, and actually, yeah. And so, it's been here more and more, and so there's, we had some folks come to our commission meeting and ask that, maybe we do a little more research and see if we could actually get the dedicated wording in there that says, and gives specifics, so it can be done safely and not damage the tree, and then we have boundaries to look at. So, if someone's doing it incorrectly, we know how to redirect them.
Why did you say that is, Nancy, about four inches?
Well, some, I've seen some four inches. I've seen some really narrow. So, it is, it's like high-wire act, so to speak.
I was walking by Rotary Park one evening, and there was a young fellow there with his two kids, I think, and he set one up, and it's the first time I'd ever seen it. And I'm, I'm watching him, and it was pretty amazing, and, you know, and then he looks at me, he says, "We want to give it a try?"
[laughing]
"Are you crazy?" No, thank you.
I know.
But it's interesting.
Yeah, it really is.
Other questions for Nancy from the council?
Just one short one. Any updates on the off-leash area of Mountain View Park? Is that getting better hanging in there?
Well, you know, we really appreciated the feedback that we received. We had a big support of the group of people. We affectionately call them the dog people, but that's, and they love it. So, they know they're, they're really tied into this, and so they're really monitoring and, and watching what's going on there. But we found out that really, we need to have a little more clear signage for the people who are having, there are some issues, like there are even when you have an off-leash area, or we see issues in all over the parks with some of those, with dog droppings and so forth, or people not following the rules. But we're actually looking at being proactive now, and getting maybe some websites up on some of the newer signage, so if people have an issue, they know exactly where to go, so we can hear it. It gets back to us, and we know how to address it. We've suggested getting some sandwich sign boards, that when there's an event out there, it specifically says, "In this area, all dogs on leash," and we're to report if someone isn't. So, we're wanting to empower the people who are feeling like they're, they're having an issue, but they don't know where to go, as well as helping our group of people who follow the rules continue to police and, not police, monitor the area.
Thanks, thank you. Well, thank you very much, Nancy, and thank you for not only chairing that commission, but your dedicated service, service as well on that, because you've been on there a number of years now, and I certainly appreciate that.
I have. Well, thank you very much. I really enjoyed it.
Okay. Next, we will have Mayor's appointments, and I'm going to start this off, because we have got a new Human Resources Director lined up, and I am going to let Gary do a little presentation on. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, our Human Resources Director, Debbie Klein-Robertsen, tendered her resignation in June of this year, and we immediately began a search for her replacement. So, we looked at the job description, did all those sorts of things, and advertised, and I'm happy to say that we had 17 applicants for the position. Out of those 17 applicants, we had probably six or seven very strong applicants. The interviews took place a week ago, a week ago Thursday and Friday, and the Mayor and I were privileged to have second interviews after the initial interview team. Dan Carsgalon was on there, council president, representing the City Council, and had a great day of interviews, finished up with three interviews on Friday, and Mark Brigham was the selection by the Mayor to present to you for appointment tonight. Mark is a former Human Resources Director from the City of Lewiston about 10 years ago. He has a history of HR directorship in some pulp and paper industries, as well as having been the HR Director in a hotel chain, and so he's got a lot of experience. He impressed, the interview committee impressed the Mayor and I, and we extended an offer to him, to which he accepted. So, if he, his appointment is confirmed tonight, we'll try to get him onboard, hopefully within the next six weeks to, or two months.
Questions for Gary from council? Okay, I would go ahead and entertain a vote on Mark Brigham as our new Human Resources Director.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and accept, appoint, accept your appointment of Mark Brigham as HR Director.
Okay. Okay, Wayne. Dan made the motion to approve. Wayne did the second. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, then we will move on to our other commission members. We've got five that I'm bringing forward to council. Sandra Kelly on the Human Rights Commission, with that term to expire on 12/30. Sandra Kelly on the Human Rights Commission with that term to expire on 12/31/2017. Keegan Caldwell for the Sustainable Environment Commission, which expires 12/31/2015. Frederick Pollard, Sustainable Environment Commission, which will expire 12/31/2016. Victoria Seaver, Sustainable Environment Commission, which will expire 12/31/2015. And Ron Smith, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to expire 12/31/2018. I would entertain a motion for this as well.
Your honor, I'd move that we approve the slate.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by Art to approve these five candidates. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we'll move on. Now, we've got some of those folks here. There's three people from the Sustainable Environment Commission. Keegan is here, Keegan Caldwell, Frederick Pollard, as well as Victoria Seaver. So if you'd all three stand up. Sandra Kelly is not here and neither is Ron Smith, so if we could give these folks a nice round of applause. Thank you so very much. It is so appreciated when we have folks in our community, we've got lots and lots of volunteers for these various commissions, so thank you very much for applying and coming forward to do that for us. Okay, and I will now open the session up to public comment and mayor's response period. This is where the public can come and speak before us, as long as it is something that is not on our agenda this evening, or something that is front of parks or public works in-
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, excuse me, as well as board of adjustments, I had the two combined in my head. So if you'd like to come forward, this is the time you may do it. We'll give you three minutes, state your name and address if you would please. Would you please, Dan, would you please come up and you can address, that way everybody from TV land can see you and Lieutenant Colonel, this would be great.
I apologize, I left out one very, very important and perhaps most important fact about the ceremony a week from Friday, and that is that we are going to have a World War II prisoner war. And as you know, last week was the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II, and we're continuing to lose World War II veterans at a rapid rate. But we're very pleased to have Mr. Richard Tierney from Lewiston, Idaho, who was a B-17 navigator, shot down on the 10th of September 1944 over Germany, and then spent the rest of the war until liberation in Stalag Luft 1, German POW camp. And we're going to be real pleased to be able to bring him up, recognize him and honor him at the ceremony, and also hear about his experience. So I just wanted to be sure and let everybody know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Colonel Dan Burton. Okay. With that, we will move on to item number six, which is 335 Lauter Avenue, Lot Division, Michael Ray will present, please.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a Lot Division request by Mr. Otto Kais at 335 Lauter Avenue within the city. So just to acquaint yourself with the property, it's in the center of your screen, approximately sixteen thousand five hundred square feet in size, located right on the curve of Lauter Avenue where it's heading south and turns directly to the east there, in that southwest corner. Property is completely surrounded by residential properties. You have single-family, two-family, and multifamily properties intermingled within the vicinity. You have a single-family house directly to the west, and currently on the subject property is an accessory structure, a shop building on the north side. Looking at the zoning in the area, it's in the multiple-family residential R4 zoning district. What that means is there's a minimum lot width of fifty feet, minimum lot area of five thousand square feet for that zone. Our setback requirements are fifteen feet for the front and the side setback requirements are going to be five feet, but you have to have a total of fifteen for both sides. Rear's going to be twenty. Looking at the proposal before you tonight, it's going to take that approximately sixteen thousand five hundred square foot parcel, propose to divide it into three parcels. You have parcel A, B, and C. Parcel A is going to be six thousand two hundred ninety-four square feet in size. B is proposed to be five thousand one hundred seventy-four square feet. And parcel C proposed to be a little over five thousand square feet in size. As you can see, two of the parcels, or the proposed parcels, have flagpoles, which are twenty feet wide here, the one in the center. Within that area, you have sanitary sewer easement, which extends in that northeasterly direction, currently existing, has a manhole right here in the center of the property. Also within that is a private, proposed to be a private access easement, so all three parcels will share a common drive, which comes off of Lauter Avenue. This is what it looks like on the ground, so you have that existing shop building there, which will be retained on the north parcel, and then you have the two parcels to the south there being proposed. Staff's recommendation before you tonight is to approve the Lot Division request with the following condition, that only one vehicular approach be permitted along Lauter Avenue. And with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you have on the proposal.
Dan?
So Mike, looking at the survey, the street actually curves farther away, I mean, it really doesn't look like any of it touches the street, but is that right-of-way then? Is it angled the way it is, that the city's right-of-way?
Yeah, that'd just be public right-of-way, the triangular shape you have in between the sidewalk and the property.
That's all public there?
Public right-of-way, correct.
Right across, okay, thank you.
Walter?
Thank you, mayor. My question, on the plat map, there's a shaded area in the flag, for the staff of the flagpole lot. What's the significance of that? I don't know if there's anybody from Hodge here. Oh, you're hiding, Scott, I didn't see you. Maybe, perhaps Scott can answer, just the significance of the shaded area.
Yeah, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. The shaded area is my understanding, and I didn't actually do this plat, it was our surveyor in-house, but that is the shared easement for the property. So that shaded area is where all three parcels share the access and that much of it.
Do you know, does the fifty-one hundred and seventy-four square feet representative of parcel B include that shaded area?
It does, indeed.
Okay. And if I may, following up on that, this is probably for Mike. I don't, I didn't look, and I didn't think of it till tonight, Mike. What instrument does the city need to connect these three lots to that one access? In other words, working on the assumption that someday these three lots may belong to three different owners, does the city, are we putting anything in place to legally keep this to one access and require parcels A and C to use that flagpole staff to get in and out of their lots?
Well, the Lot Division will be on file with the city, and so we'll have that condition running with the approval. But Public Works Department will be responsible for any type of approval for approaches coming off of Lauter Avenue that permit one with the approval of this Lot Division, and so no others would be allowed, but we don't actually record anything with the county. It would just be a condition on the Lot Division approval.
Mr. Mayor? Looking at the city attorney and public works director, any comments on the question?
I think anybody who's buying that, looking at that real estate, is going to want an easement, if it's not going to be clearly defined on the title. That's one thing I would require, is that there is an easement that's granted from the main property owner, from the dominant estate to the surveying estates.
And don't misunderstand, I'm in favor of this, I'm just trying to understand how it works.
Mike, did I misunderstand, is this is approved, that will be part of it? Of the parcel that has been forced, right? I mean, that's a gimme, is that not true on this, as far as the easement's concerned?
There would, yeah, proposed to be a private access easement recorded on the property, be part of the Lot Division approval.
Okay. Art?
A couple of things, could you refresh my memory on how flagpoles lots work versus the fifty feet of street frontage required?
For flagpole lots, we have a minimum lot width, instead of the fifty, it's going to be twenty, which all parcels meet here, and then you can't have a flagpole greater than a hundred and fifty feet. And so in our view of these parcels, you know, both of them meet the flagpole requirements.
And a bit of a follow-up, seems to state that the triangular piece up top fronting Lauter is actually public. How does, does the city deed over part of that public property to allow access across to get to the street?
The city would just allow that access as part of the street approach permit when they pour the driveway and they approach off of Lauter Avenue.
And finally, lastly, is that access going to cause any problems with the easement for the underground utilities that are present?
Is the private access easement going to-
Yeah, because you got the manhole cover and the sanitary sewer easement and things like that, and is putting an access point across that going to interfere with the public access to that facility?
And Mike, Les has got his hand up, you want to take that?
Yeah, if I could, the easement for the sewer system obviously predates this operation, but that easement remains in place for access to that utility for any type of maintenance, repair, that type of work, and presence of that utility within the easement. So having an access drive occupying the same space really doesn't create a problem for us for the utility itself. And then just to go back briefly, if I could, on the easements question, parcel B, as I understand it, has an easement on it that is to the benefit of parcel A and parcel C. So that will remain on parcel B, A and C then get to use it to access the public right-of-way, and then from that right-of-way line out to the street itself, just like anywhere else where the sidewalk is set some distance from the edge of the property line, or from the right-of-way line, it's just part of a driveway until you reach the curb itself.
Thank you, Les. Any comments for Mike? Would council like to move forward?
Your honor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Lot Division request with the conditions-
One vehicle approach off of Lauter?
Exactly.
Is that one condition?
Second that motion.
Okay, Dan made a motion and Jim Boland seconded that motion to approve the Lot Division with the one condition, the vehicle approach off of, one vehicle approach off of Lauter Avenue be permitted. We're good to go, I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move forward, thank you very much, Mike. Okay, item number seven, Southeast Moscow Water Sewer District contract extension, Les McDonald will present this to us. Move on for a few more minutes.
Evening, Matt, Mayor Lambert.
I'm having a tough time talking tonight to Les, it's not-
Mayor Lambert, members of the council. The item before you is an extension of the 1990 Southeast Moscow Sewer District and City of Moscow services contract. It is an item that we have extended on numerous occasions previously while we have been considering the city's perspective on the continuation of the sewer district, or if the city should in some manner propose something other than the current relationship between the district and the city. The previous extension of this agreement carries the contract to the end of this month, and so this document before you this evening would extend that until the 29th of January. If you'll recall, we're also looking at a workshop in the near future. The item of, or the item of discussion was brought before the Public Works Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago to talk about where we're heading in that process of determining the relationship between the city and the district. Tentatively, we are looking at a workshop on, I believe it's the 8th of October, between the district and the city council to discuss that future. So in the meantime, this item will extend existing contract far enough out there that we can have that workshop and subsequent discussions at the council level.
Thank you, Les. Questions for Les? And what we've got in front of us is just an extension of the previous contract that we have that expires the end of this month and is moving it forward till the 29th of January.
Needing action on our part, if it does, I-
We do need to approve it, to keep-
I would move to approve the extension.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion to approve this extension with John second to make this agreement valid through the 29th of January 2016. You got a question, Walter?
Just a statement, mayor, this is the seventh amendment to the agreement, I would like to think there will not be an eighth.
We're trying to get to ten, aren't we?
I hope not. I understand that this is a somewhat complex situation we're dealing with, I don't think it's, it's the hardest thing in the world to do, but I understand why it's had some extensions, but I would just like to encourage everyone to see if we can't move this to some conclusion.
Gary, don't we have a meeting date set up to address this?
Thursday, October 8th at three o'clock to six o'clock, there will be a joint meeting attended by the city council and the officers of the Southeast Moscow Sewer District and attendant staff. So staff, as you know, at the last Administrative Committee and Public Works meeting, there was a white paper distributed which taught, went fairly in-depth in the history of the issue, as well as the complications and questions that need to be answered. So staff is continuing to refine that and will be presenting that on the 8th.
And that will be here in these chambers, correct?
Yes, and hopefully seeking some direction at that time.
Okay. Other questions before you vote? Okay, Walter, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, we will move forward, thank you very much, Les. Item number eight, Alteris Research and Technology Park Revenue Allocation Area Termination, presented by Bill Belknap. Hi, Bill, how are you tonight?
Thank you, your honor, I'm doing well. As the mayor introduced, the item before you this evening is consideration of the closure or the termination of the Alteris Research and Technology Park Revenue Allocation Area. I just provide a little bit of background, within the state of Idaho, the Idaho Urban Renewal Law allows for the creation of urban renewal agencies by local governments to create urban renewal districts and to conduct urban renewal projects. In addition, the Local Economic Development Act authorizes the use of tax increment financing by local governments to fund urban renewal project activities. Tax increment financing is accomplished through the designation of revenue allocation area, within which taxes upon future increased property values are conveyed to the URA to fund eligible activities. Some of those eligible activities can include the construction of a wide variety of public infrastructure, acquisition of real property, environmental remediation, and the preparation of a variety of plans or studies. And under state code today, revenue allocation areas can have a duration of no more than twenty years, that was previously twenty-four years to an amendment several years ago. So as you, as you see, the, when you establish a revenue allocation area, there is a base assessed value that's established, then any increased property valuation and taxes that are generated based upon that increased valuation are conveyed to the urban renewal agency to reinvest in that project area through public infrastructure and other activities to spur private investment in economic development. That increases the value and the growth of valuation in a district, and then at the end of the district, at the maximum of twenty years, then the total value then is available to the taxing districts. And so it really is a deferral for a short period of time where that, those funds can be used to invest and to stimulate other private investment and activity, and at the end of the day, this is essentially the increased value that you, that is realized within the project areas over time. Alteris Technology Park was first established and formed in 1996, and it was a greenfield, really economic development project. At that point in time, the Alteris was intended to provide a location for the incubation of companies that were, for the location for incubated companies that were coming out of the University of Idaho incubator to invest and grow within the city of Moscow. There was a lack of private interest and investment in that target sector, and that is what really drove the university, the city, LEDC, and the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency to partner on- to partner on this project. The project included the creation of a specific zoning district, the Research, Technology, and Office District, that is focused upon research and technology uses, and it included a revenue allocation area that included sixty-two point one acres, but a much more focused project area. Phase one included seven point three seven acres, it was established in nineteen ninety-six, and phase two included six point three four acres, and that was the amendment and restated plan that occurred in two thousand and six. Within both of these projects, MIRA acted as the developer. In phase one, the MIRA partnered with the underlying property owner to hold the property while the agency came and made the public improvements, and then resold the lots at essentially a raw land value. And in phase two, the agency actually acquired the property for the, for the phase two portion of the project, and completed the public improvements and development on, on the project. The revenue, revenue allocation area, as stated in the plan, was for twenty years, which was to end in two thousand and sixteen. On the map is shown the outline of the revenue allocation area, this is what we most commonly know as Alturus Research Technology Park, but the revenue allocation area itself, which is larger, reaches to Blaine Street, down to the Blaine, or, I'm sorry, White Avenue, to the White Avenue Steiner intersection, down the highway to Blaine, back around the south edge of the project to Mountain View. So that's the sixty-two acre revenue allocation area for the project. Of course, the project area was, was much smaller, phase one is outlined here in yellow, and then phase two as red, so those are the two individual project areas. And within a urban renewal project or plan, essentially, revenue can be generated within revenue allocation area, but those funds can only be expended within the project area. And so the, those monies were utilized to help construct the public improvements within Alturus, the public park facilities, and to, to set up the industrial or technology park. There are a number of successes in Alturus, within the formation, the basis assessed valuation nineteen ninety-five, within the revenue allocation area was four point six million, as of two thousand and eight, that had reached over twenty-two million, which was just under a thirteen percent annual growth rate, which was much more significant than the traditional market appreciation rates. With respect to job creation, over that time period, over two hundred highly skilled jobs have been created, with average wages in excess of fifty thousand per year, and there are a number of other secondary ancillary economic, economic benefits, as a lot of these jobs and companies are exporters, and so there's, there are additional multiplier impacts and, and benefits to the local economy. There have been a number of high-tech companies that have started and grown within Alturus, including Alturus Analytics, EMSI, which now grew, you know, within the PAC Sim building and moved now to downtown, Comtech AHA, Anatech Labs, Bio Tracking, and Pacific Simulation is one of the first companies within Alturus Park. As you go through the revenue allocation area, there are a number of stages and procedures that you have to fulfill, the first of which is that the urban renewal agency prepares a closure plan and a closure budget, and then the agency passes a resolution recommending termination of the revenue allocation area to the city council. The city council then must pass an ordinance to terminate the revenue allocation area, and then that ordinance is filed with Leita County Recorder and the State Tax Commission by no later than January tenth, following its passage. After closure, any residual increment revenue that the agency may have that has come from that district would then be conveyed to the county for dispersment to the representative taxing districts. The Moscow Urban, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency has determined that all anticipated activities within the Alturus Research and Technology Park Urban Renewal District Plan have been completed. The agency made its last final debt service payment in July of this year, and the agency has also determined that they desire to close the revenue allocation area one year early, and return the full valuation to the taxing districts as soon as possible. Under the plan, it was not anticipated to close until two thousand and sixteen, which means that there would be additional revenues received for another year, and the agency wishes for those to return to the taxing districts. The agency has prepared a closure plan, budget, and passed Resolution two thousand fifteen oh two, recommending the early termination of the revenue allocation area to the city council. The budget and the termination plan are included in your packet, and are included as a exhibit to the draft ordinance that is also included in your packet. As of this time, it is projected that the agency has roughly little over nine hundred thousand dollars in excess tax increment revenues from the Alturus District. After some expenses will be incurred this year, it's anticipated that seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that, dollars of those funds will be available to be dispersed to the different taxing districts. So the recommendation this evening is to receive the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency's Resolution two thousand fifteen oh two, recommending termination of the Alturus Research and Technology Park Revenue Allocation Area, and approve the termination ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that the ordinance be read by title and published by summary. With that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, questions for Bill, Walter?
Thank you, sir. Bill, today when you and I were talking about this, you discovered some discrepancy in the way the packet was put together, is, that was just a packet problem, it's, wasn't a prob, problem with any of the documents, anything?
Correct, there, you'll notice that the letter to the city requesting consideration on this evening, it looks like there was a duplication area, but the full copy of the ordinance and the termination resolution plan and budget are included just behind that.
Okay, so we're, we're okay with that? And second question?
Walter, go ahead.
You made a comment during your presentation, that in phase one, the land was sold at raw land value to the purchasers of those properties. Is phase two priced the same way?
It is.
Okay, so the lots that remain for sale are priced at raw land value?
Correct, it's, it's a, at the undeveloped rate, or at least, let me step back, property in the agency is sold for what's deemed to be the fair use value of that property. So the, an appraisal is conducted where all of the conditions or limitations of use based on zoning, or based on private covenants or other restrictions are taken into consideration, and essentially, a fair use value is established through that appraisal process. There was a separate agreement in phase one with that pri, with the private property owner, since they were holding the properties and making them available for sale, that they be sold at a approximation of a raw land value. So that essentially, the, the investment that the agency made into the park would provide for lots at a reduced rate available to those targeted industries.
So in phase two, that is not the case?
In phase two, it is separate through a fair use appraisal, but the value has been held substantially the same.
Okay, that's, you finally got around to the question.
It's slightly different, but it's essentially the same.
Essentially the same, thank you.
Actually, the only thing I have to say that, I've been on the urban renewal agency since it started, and one of the goals that we had, when we put this first thing together, was to end the project as quickly as possible, and it looks like we're going to be able to end it at least one year early, and at the same time, return a fair amount of money to the taxing districts that have waited a fairly long time to get it, so I am fully in favor of doing this, and I'd make a motion for that to that effect.
Hang on just a second, John, Gary, did you have a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, I did, and being one of the few people left who are here when this tax allocation area was formed back in nineteen ninety-six, I also serve on a statewide board of urban renewal agencies, and with what's going on in Lewiston, just thirty-five miles to the south, and to the north, a hundred miles, I think the city of Moscow and the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency have formed an excellent partnership with Leita County, and this is one of those situations where urban renewal works in Moscow. The objectives of the urban renewal agency, the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission have all come to fruition, with the downturn in the economy, not all of the lots sold, but as you can see, there's been a huge increase in value in that tax allocation area, in the project area, which means that, as Bill indicated, that acceleration just makes better business. And we have businesses out there that otherwise might not still be in Moscow, at least one of those properties has been sold a couple of times, so there's still a demand for that sort of building here. So this is a, a success, and being able to close it a year early, when the city approved the original ordinance forming the tax allocation area, the city could have made it a twenty-four year tax allocation area at that time, they looked at it and said, no, you should be able to get this done in twenty years. And in addition to that, they made, they were very careful about proceeding with a smaller phase, going to a second phase, and they wanted to make sure that what was, the money that was generated by tax increment in that area was used to improve the project areas. So one of the few times you see that in urban renewal, where the money is actually focused in a certain area. So this is just, I couldn't be more excited about it, I know that the council members that serve and have served on the urban renewal agency share that same excitement, that here's an opportunity for the urban renewal agency to put those tax dollars back in the hands of the taxing districts, and all of the residual businesses are there to continue to be successful in Moscow.
John, I'll turn it back to you, because you wanted to make that motion, but I wanted Gary's point in there.
I'd move that we receive the agency resolution recommending termination of the Alturus, Alturus Research and Technology Park, and approve the Technology Park Urban Renewal District Allocation Area Termination Ordinance under suspicion, under suspension, not suspicion, suspension, under rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that the ordinance be read by title and published by summary.
And I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion by John, and a second by Wayne, to receive the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero three, recommending a termination of Alturus Research Park, Research and Technology Park Revenue Allocation Area, and recommend approval and passage of Technology Park Urban Renewal District Revenue Allocation Area's termination ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that the ordinance be read by title only and published by summary. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that moves forward, and there's an ordinance to read, and it is, you've got to held the title to read there. Yes, I do, twenty dash fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay, we got twenty dash fifteen, twenty fifteen dash fifteen. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, concerning the city of Moscow, Idaho Research and Technology Park Urban Renewal Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Area Plan nineteen ninety-six Revenue Allocation Area, approved pursuant to the city of Moscow ordinance number ninety-six dash twelve, and the second amended and restated city of Moscow, Idaho Research and Technology Park Urban Renewal Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Area Plan two thousand and five. Revenue allocation area established pursuant to the city of Moscow's ordinance number twenty zero zero five dash eighteen, directing termination of the city of Moscow, Idaho Research and Technology Park Urban Renewal Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Area Plan nineteen ninety-six, and the second amended stated city of Moscow, Idaho Research Technology Park Urban Renewal Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Area Plan two thousand and five, authorizing the city staff to take all steps to implement this ordinance, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and providing for other matters preferably related thereto.
Bravo.
Holy Toledo.
Oh, God, sir.
I need, I need a little oxygen after. Is that okay, that sound pretty good to you guys?
Good.
Get all that, Stephanie? Well, that's a long-winded version of that, and we're done with that, so we're going to move on and-
You didn't have to read the whole thing.
That's it, thank God, and we're going to move on to item number nine, Vandal Town Party Beer and Wine Garden. Rod Hall has got the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. The University of Idaho Chamber of Commerce and the city of Moscow are hosting the second Vandal Town Block Party on the twenty-fifth of September. Would this be the first annual? Since it's the second one, I don't think it'd be the second annual, so this would be the first annual for the event, the second time we're having the Vandal Block Party. The idea of the block party is to promote the close connection between all our entities, to show that we really have a great sense of community here in Moscow. But under Moscow city code, open containers of alcohol are prohibited in the public ways and public streets, except by an ordinance that the city council passed earlier this year, that allows the council, gives, authorizes the council to pass resolutions that would allow alcohol to be possessed and consumed within streets under certain circumstances and under limited conditions. So tonight, there's a resolution before you that would actually grant authority to the city to be able to issue catering permits for a beer and or wine gardens for, during this event. I think one of the purposes of this, last year at the event, it was well-received, there was a lot of people, but they were trying to figure out ways to fill up the streets even more, and this gives an opportunity to move people into the center, if they qualify and if they apply, to be able to do a beer and wine garden inside the, in the city streets in Moscow, while music is going on and other people are going around. So tonight, the council, or the resolution spells out the particular date, the time limits on this resolution, and authorizes the city staff to issue the permits to allow the beer and wine gardens for this particular event.
Rod, this event is Friday, September twenty-fifth, from the time of six P.M. to ten P.M., is that correct?
Correct.
Questions for Rod? Jim?
Rod, this, is it going to require a fenced area for the beer and wine garden, or will it just be general main street where the street barriers are, where the streets blocked off?
Well, for the particular wine and beer and wine garden, we require them to have some kind of barrier that people can't crawl under, that there's only a entry and an exit place, so that it's controlled, so it's not just flowing out into the street everywhere.
And that's what we had last year, too, Jim. Walter?
Yeah, and I would, I would say that we're not having Mardi Gras on Main Street, would be my interpretation, what this is proposing. Last year, when we started talking about ways to communicate to the students that we, we have a, something more than a university campus, we've got a downtown, we've got merchants, we've got restaurants, we've got movie houses, and other things downtown, I was, I was and still am, a big supporter of Vandal Block Party by whatever name. I remember having this occur in the small rural land-grant town where I went to college, I thought it was a great thing then, and I think it's a great thing now. I do have a problem with the proposals before us tonight. I, I don't believe that we need to open up Main Street to, to one or more beer gardens in relation to this event. We have opened it up to beer gardens for specific businesses that have a specific activity they wish to do, we're not anti-alcohol, but if we're attempting to introduce the new students that have come to Moscow to go to the University of Idaho, to the downtown, I would suggest that the majority of those are freshmen, and the majority of those freshmen are underage to drink anyway. I've heard the argument that we need to show them how you can drink responsibly, and morally, and so forth, and I don't believe that's our job. I, I don't believe the city council's in charge of teaching morals or teaching how to drink. I think that we should be in charge of regulating where alcohol is, is consumed, and when and, when and why. And we, we have done that, we have allowed it, in other places, we've not allowed it. So, for those reasons, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that the proposed resolution before us tonight be denied.
Walter's motion fails for a lack of a second. Other question, Wayne?
Got a question, Rod, I don't remember in, in, in the ordinance, I'll have to refresh my memory, how do we control the size of these beer gardens?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that information, it's basically the discretion of the staff to make sure that it's something that can be controlled, so it's not too large to where you can't have, basically, controlled where the alcohol is being consumed and served.
Well, ultimately, when it comes to the council for approval on this, which each, each particular instance stands on its own, if we decide that the area that's going to be utilized as a beer and wine garden, if we decide ourselves that we think it's too big, then we could certainly make that determination, is that correct?
Actually, I don't think you have that authority, it's actually law enforcement, the chief would actually make a determination whether it's something that they can be patrolled, controlled, on the size.
Those are- Okay, but, but further, my question would be that, when the request for the beer and wine garden comes to the council, the size, we would be, we would know what the size is, is going to be at that particular time.
It, it wouldn't be coming to council, you're authorizing staff to authorize beer and wine garden.
Deb, even, you want to answer this, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that what this resolution does is allow beer gardens in the area where you're going to have your event, then each business that would like to have one- to have one has to come in for a catering permit, and that has to be approved by staff and by the chief of police. So, what we did was we wrote into the resolution that it, you know, the size and where it is would have to be approved by staff, because it couldn't be anywhere that we already plan on having, you know, if we plan on having booze or food vendors or anything that's out there, we obviously don't want to let somebody have something over, you know, what is already planned. So, we just figured anything would have to be approved by staff.
Approved by Chief Duke as well, right?
Well, Chief Duke has to, or someone in the police department has to approve the catering permit, and then we figured we would let the city supervisor or his designee check out where they wanted to have it and size.
Carry on further.
Yeah. The issue, and typically what the council has limited its inquiry to in these situations is, number one, is it the sort of event that a beer garden, you would feel comfortable with a beer garden being in the public right-of-way, and a resolution usually addresses that, yes, it may be there, that you will hire security personnel to make sure that what is there is in accordance with law, so on and so forth. In this situation, with the pretty immediacy of the downtown block party, and last year the council had allowed extension of sidewalk cafes onto the frontage of adjoining businesses where businesses could sell food, could have a beer garden, so on and so forth, the inquiry came up as to whether or not that would be extended now that the council has passed the ordinance allowing by resolution a beer garden to be in the public right-of-way. So, anticipating that those requests would come forward, we had Rod draft a generic resolution, if you will, where the ministerial functions that staff does, that is the alcohol licensing, the catering, location, making sure that the fire code is, is complied with, that the police concerns are met, that someone could apply to have a beer garden, and then staff would make sure that it met all the requirements of the code. So, that's kind of the genesis of this, and because it is a six-street to second-street block party, street closure, if you will, there will be likely more than one vendor that wants to do that. They still have to comply with the same alcohol codes that any other sidewalk, excuse me, sidewalk cafe or a beer garden in some other venue.
And also, to Wayne's concern, yeah, normally, when you have a resolution coming for you, somebody's asking for a particular beer and wine garden for their event that they're hosting, they usually have a map, so you actually, right, you do get to see that. This particular one, we don't know where they're going to be, and as the city supervisor mentioned, is coming up, so we probably wouldn't have time to come forward with particular maps showing where they would be out on the street. But you, sure that the police officers or the chief of police or his designees going to make sure that it's not too big and doesn't overflow and affect other events.
But with that being said, when they come forward to get the permit, they will have that area designated, they're requesting, correct?
They have to have a map, yes, and then the city, the staff would approve that.
Okay. Wayne?
Not that I think that this would happen, but my biggest concern would be that we end up with a half a dozen entities that want to have a beer garden. And so, suddenly, Main Street turns into one big beer garden with passageways in between it. I don't think that that would happen.
No, it wouldn't happen.
And I, that was one of my concerns, is that the council has the ability to make sure that, that this thing is, is controlled. As far as responsibility of drinking, I, I think that this is another good example that, that is portrayed in the fact that we do not allow open containers on public right-of-way. This is an exception where, when we have a beer garden, that it is allowed, and as long as it's a controlled situation, I think it's fine. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Wayne and a second by Jim Boland to approve the resolution. Further discussion before we vote on this, Walter?
Not to be argumentative with staff, but a very quick reading of this just now, I, I don't see where it says staff shall review and approve. I also don't see anything, secondly, that says this is limited between sixth and, and second. And I guess, third, to play off of Wayne, I don't see anything that precludes everybody from downtown from having one, like he said. Okay, you got the, the sixth and seventh, okay.
About the fifth down.
Granting authority to appropriate city staff.
There should be no more than one entrance and one exit. The assumption shows on the map required by this resolution.
That only, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
That fifth whereas that Art just pointed out to me only says that Moscow Main Street between sixth and second is a city street, doesn't say this is where this is being done.
Go three, three more down.
Three more down. Okay, the council gives authority to appropriate city staff, not the chief, to approve catering permits, but it doesn't talk about the size of the beer garden.
Size of the beer garden would be up to the appropriate city staff, which in this case would be the chief or the chief's designee, is that not correct?
Correct, and the city supervisor or his designee.
And the city supervisor would have the final say-so, and I guess if the mayor wanted to get involved, the mayor could get involved.
Well, I think our staff could handle it, I'm quite comfortable with that.
Yes.
Okay, other comments before we go for a vote? John, I'll start the roll to you.
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, we got a five in favor and a one opposed. Okay, we will move on to item number ten, request for leased parking lot by Rancin' Raves Brewery and Restaurant. Gary Reardon will present.
Thank you, Your Honor. Neil Marzoff and his wife are the owners of Rancin' Raves Brewery and Restaurant, which is located, or will be located, in the old Culligan Building located on North Jackson Street, just south of the Rosars Parking Lot and adjacent to the C Street right-of-way. And the property itself has no off-street parking, the parking is located on Jackson Street, and there is an adjacent public right-of-way that has not been vacated, C Street, which is not open for, it's open for traffic, but it's not a part of C Street, it's a retained right-of-way by the city. Throughout this situation, Mr. Marzoff and his wife purchased the property and without, at that time, the knowledge that they would be required to have parking adjacent to the business to meet the zoning code. Came in, talked to city staff, that was made clear to Mr. Marzoff, and he started looking for alternatives. Dealt with adjoining property owners and could not find the, the best piece of property that could be used for parking. That property owner was not interested in leasing for a parking lot. He attempted to contact Leita Sanitation, which operates Moscow's recycling center, and of course, they don't have the authority to lease city property, at least part of the recycling center. So, he came to the city, and we identified the remnant of the north, the southbound, southbound couplet on the north end of town, which is a remnant property that was left to the city or granted to the city by ITD by Quikclaim D. It is therefore city property, it is not public right-of-way. Back in 2002, there were several property exchanges between the city and ITD for remnant pieces of property, pieces of property ITD needed for perhaps location of signal boxes, so on and so forth. So, this was one of those pieces of property. One of the other prominent pieces is the one just north of CJ's Tavern or CJ's Club, owned by, owned by Phil Roderick. So, this is a situation, Mr. Roderick, as you know, leased that property for time from the city for parking. Mr. Marzoff has agreed, city has agreed to present to the city council. If you look at the exhibit, you can see generally the size of the property that would be proposed. The terms of the lease, Mr. Marzoff has seen, essentially, it would be for $100 a month. Bill Belknap indicates that because it is across a right-of-way, there will not be a CUP required for utilization of that parking lot for the brewery and restaurant. There are also some improvements, even though it is a paved parking lot, that will have to be made by the Marzoffs, and that includes relocation of a street luminaire standard in the property, as well as striping of the entire area, so there's no confusion and safe parking and passage of vehicles can be had there. Something that came up, I was just talking to Mr. Marzoff about the potential for an ADA accessible ramp, because one of the spaces, he, nine spaces are required, which includes one ADA accessible space, whether or not it would be necessary for Mr. Marzoff to, to install an ADA ramp, and in speaking to Les McDonald, he would work to find out if that is necessary, and if it is something that would be part of the lease, or whether it's something that the city would participate in, depending on where it is located, that can be worked out. But there will be language inserted in the lease that addresses the ADA accessibility as well. With that, community development has indicated that there must be at least a five-year lease on the property in order that it meets the requirements of the zoning code. So, with that, correct, I'm, you're looking at me like I'm saying something, anyway.
Is he doing okay, Bill?
For the moment. So, with that...
Not quite.
I'll just clarify that there's no, no defined terms required by the zoning code, it just has to be in force and effect as long as the use is, is active.
Okay.
Didn't mean to put words in your mouth.
Questions for Gary? Art?
Looking at the map, it looks like there's 15 spaces, is that correct?
Those spaces are not entirely on the leased premises.
Yeah, but...
So, they overlap.
So, nine on, but then there'll be other striped spaces available for other...
For others.
Businesses.
Yes, around.
Okay, Wayne, did you have a?
Heck, along the same questions that Art had, so, for, Marzoff needs nine spaces, there's, the way it's marked off on our map shows 16 spaces, is he responsible for striping all 16 spaces?
Yes.
So, I would assume then that where he's going to be leasing nine, that there'll be a sign that will be put up indicating private parking for his business.
Yes.
How are the other seven spaces going to be regulated?
You'd have to ask Les, I'm assuming it would just be public parking.
That is correct, it'd be open, public parking, similar to what's out there today.
Three-hour?
Right now, it's just kind of wide open, and people park wherever they choose.
So, are we going to be looking at changing that to those seven spaces to three-hour parking, or?
I, I don't envision that.
We, we'll talk about that later, right?
I would see it remaining open, and I should just point out that the, the striping plan you see here is a preliminary version, there are several of them. This one was really included to show where the area...
That was, okay, that was doing it to show that there would be enough spaces available for what was requested. John, you had something you want to?
Well, I'm fully in favor of this. The only thing that I would like to see added would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pints of your finest available once a month.
Stephanie, distract that from the record, that, and I'll go to Walter.
Well, like John, I'm in favor of the proposal, I'm, I'm not going to go with his second part. But, as Les just said, Exhibit A in our packet, Gary, is, is in the resolution as the plan. But according to Les just now, and in talking to him earlier today, they've got several different versions that they're still trying to either conclude within Les's shop or possibly work with the owner to conclude what the striping plan will actually be. So, I'm, I'm wondering if the motion that gets made tonight, I presume to approve this, needs to leave some flexibility for an agreeable plan, and also, I would like for that motion to include the ADA accessible ramp, should that be deemed necessary, in addition to the streetlight relocation and the striping of the entire property.
Your Honor, on Exhibit A, just the triangle is supposed to just show the, the property that's going to be leased, and not necessarily where the parking spaces are going to be in there. I think that was for demonstrative purposes, to show that they could fit in there, but I think this is just the area that is going to be leased.
Okay, all right.
We can certainly change the exhibit so that it's clear that that's its purpose.
If I may, Gary, I'm correct that, that, that the striping plan will be dictated by the city, and that the one we're looking at's not necessarily the final one?
No question.
Okay.
Les has made it clear, they've had a couple of iterations, he'll get his staff on it, and they'll figure out something that works. If I may too, I, I think I figured out where I probably backed Bill into a corner. I hope no one is coming away from this with the understanding that if this leases for five years, if it goes away after five years, the use cannot continue. There has to be adequate parking for the use to continue in the building, as I've informed Mr. Marzoff, he's okay with that. So, I think I found out where I misspoke about that, so I apologize for that.
Dan?
As Walter was saying, can we put in the, I guess, Part Seven, a, a C saying that if, if the, the handicap spot and access, ADA compliant access is necessary, that that needs to be, you know, a part of the, his installation as well? Have it, have it under seven and have a C?
Sure. We'll just add that other condition, that the improvements that the...
Because of that, that's where the improvements to the premises are, so...
Art?
Yeah, I was going to say, and I'd like to add and reinforce that I'd like to see sufficient parking spaces be striped in there to accommodate not only the brewery, but also other businesses that have traditionally used that area, to provide them with adequate parking as well, and not just devote everything to just those spaces, to make sure that other spaces on the periphery of the non-leased area can accommodate sufficient parking for those other existing businesses.
If I could respond to that?
Okay, Gary?
Part of the reason that the striping is going into the adjacent areas is to make sure that there is an adequate parking plan, that people can ingress and egress the property without, to make sure that it's safe and hopefully accident-free. So, that's the reason, the striping, because it's a plan together. There is no intent to have Mr. Marzoff other than providing the striping to facilitate his area, so he'll be striping the entire parking lot, it's not intended to have him improve properties for other businesses.
No, but I think it does have to be very clear that parking does exist for other businesses in that area, having used that space for some time now for parking for their businesses, and I don't want to see them excluded to the extent that this one leased area precludes their use of a traditional area.
Neil, come on up here, and you can address the council.
Yeah, I'm Neil Marzoff. Do I get to give my address?
Yep, give us your address.
3455 Highway 95 South here in Moscow. So, I think you guys have all seen the building, you know, I'm not afraid to improve something. To answer your question more directly on the parking area, it helps my business and the future of my business to have that parking lot properly striped throughout. So, so even if it said, hey, just stripe these nine spaces, I'm actually, would, would say, hey, can I please stripe the rest of them? I want the parking lot to look as good as I've made the building, because that'll help my business and, and help me be more successful in the endeavor. And so, the, the fear of not making it accessible to the other businesses or in the location, I, I want to make it accessible to the other businesses in the location, because they'll come over and have beer and eat some of my Irish food, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about making that whole corner. making that whole corner look a lot more pleasant, because I believe the benefits to us will be even greater.
Other question. Mr. Marzov, you own the entire building, and those are your tenants anyway, aren't they?
That is correct.
So it would, I mean, to me, it just behooves him to improve the lot for his tenants.
State Farm is actually a separate building, aren't they?
State Farm is a separate building, and we do not own the State Farm building.
So that's part of why I was saying, you know, we've got to still...
Yeah, I did speak with them, and they have between two and three cars at any given time. Very seldom do they have, matter of fact, I was told they have never had more than three cars, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Neil.
You bet, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just not to beat this horse any further than we've already beat it, but the parking, other than for the nine spaces, that is not attributed to any particular other business, is it? It's to anyone that wants to park there.
Correct.
As all parking is downtown.
You could park there and walk three blocks away to go somewhere else, that's exactly right, John.
So spending a lot of time and energy, unless he chooses to mark those spots in front of those particular businesses, is not something that he should be responsible for doing.
I'm sorry, John, would you say that last part again? I didn't follow.
He is responsible for marking out his nine spaces that we are going to lease him, or that we are being asked to lease him. There are other spaces, there are other places to park adjacent to or within the same parking lot. Those other spaces can be used by anyone. For example, you don't, if you're not going into the insurance agency, you can still park there.
I get it.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, that being the case, should not be his responsibility to mark all of those as, that would be, if the city wants to, the city can...
Well, he's going to do it, John, because he wants that whole parking lot being improved so it looks like what his building is.
Good enough.
He just said that to us, so.
Good enough.
Okay.
Well, this came before Public Works and Finance last week, we discussed all these fine parts, and we were all very much in favor of it. And I want to thank staff for working as well as they did with, between Les and Bill and Rod, Gary. We had, here we had, Mr. Marzov came forward with a parking problem for downtown business, and this was solved, and it was solved very expeditiously. Having gone by that lot numerous times, it's really not utilized as well as it should, and I think this is going to be a great improvement for that particular area. I certainly liked improvements to the buildings themselves that he's done, and this will just add to it. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the attached lease of the parking lot to Mr. Marzov doing business as Rancun Ray's Brewery and Restaurant.
Second that motion.
Okay.
If I may, I'm sorry. With the addition of the ADA...
Yeah, with the, yeah, with number seven, with the addition at ADA ramp and compliant necessary product will be added to it, that's part of the motion.
Okay. Wayne made a motion, Jim Boland signed it to approve the attached lease of the parking lot to Neil Marzov, DBA Rancun Ray's Brewery and Restaurant, and with the addition of C under seven for an ADA accessible ramp. Correct?
Yep.
All right, we'll go with Walter.
Aye.
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 You have got your lease, sir. Okay, that is the end of our agenda, we're going to have reports tonight, and I want to talk to, we're also going to adjourn after reports during the executive session, so I'd ask the council, councilors, to keep your remarks brief, so that when we adjourn, we can move into it quickly. So I'll start with you, Dan.
Well, as far as committee meetings, everything was on our agenda tonight, we took care of that. Just run down quick, on the 27th, as Gary mentioned, and as we approved the appointment earlier tonight, we had the interviews with our human resources candidates, and there were, it was six really good candidates, and I, you know, we, I think we made the best choice, so with that. 29th, just wanted to mention that we had some pretty, some people that were braving the storms, so to speak, and I, when I have Fire Command, I make a little tour down through Farmer's Market to make sure everybody's got their tents strapped down properly, because the wind was supposed to kick up, but, man, it was smoky, but the people were still down there buying what they needed to buy that morning, so it was nice to see that it was still relatively busy. I didn't see how it was this weekend in the rain.
It was busy.
Still busy, so we got some diehards out there. On the 1st, I had the Tree Commission, who's still trucking along, they're working, they were talking about the, there's going to be some pruning downtown in, getting ready for the vandal Friday night there, and they're going to have a pruning workshop again in February, and tonight we also had our meeting, I met with the Arch Commission just before our meeting tonight, and they kept it pretty brief, just so they could get out of there, so we could have our meeting tonight. Everything there is going along, look forward to the 30, 30, 30 going on here this winter again, so I'll hopefully get to ring the bell again.
A chance to buy support art for you, Dan.
Okay, Art?
Yeah, Sustainable Environment Commission met on the 18th, and sort of started gearing up for the semester's event, a lot of upcoming events were discussed and planned for, movies in conjunction with the co-op were discussed, Bike Fix Event on campus was discussed, coming up on the 23rd, Farmer's Market Table coming up on the 29th. And mostly it was a matter of strong-arming certain people into applying for membership with the Sustainable Environment Commission, which succeeded. The Fair and Affordable Housing Commission meeting, this last week was canceled for conflict with the football game, should have gone ahead with the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission meeting. And next week is the URA meeting.
Okay. Walter?
I've been out of town, I have nothing.
Okay, Wayne?
Well, everything we covered under Public Works and Finance, we covered tonight. Other than that, I had on the 19th, the Moscow, or a Farmer's Market Commission. Speaking of that, it's in growing pains continuously now with the additional businesses on North Main, north of Third Street, there's three actually business owners that came forward asking that Farmer's Market be expanded north, so that's something they'll be looking at this winter. On the 27th, Smart Transit had their normal meeting, we're happy to announce that Pback Public, Pback Public...
Blue Space.
PTAC, Public Transportation Advisory Commission forwarded Idaho Transportation Department's recommendation for funding for Smart Transit, full funding for two years, close to a million and a half dollars. So Smart Transit is looking pretty good for the next couple of years, anyway. We'll see what happens there in years coming. Historical Preservation Commission met on the 27th, and the main thing is that the Idaho Heritage Conference will be on September 22nd to the 24th. That's going to have, we're hoping somewhere around 150 people in Moscow, so it'll help the economy a little bit there. That's all I've got.
Jim?
The Moscow Pathways Commission met this afternoon at 5:00, and the crux of that meeting was that the Margaret Littlejohn Bench dedication will occur this Saturday at 1:00 PM on the pathway behind Good Samaritan. And Suviya Jedd made a presentation about the Berman Creek Side Park, where she's trying to put together a master gardener group to maintain that park in the future.
Okay. John?
The only thing I have is a very short one for the Human Rights Commission, and as Ken Fauntz, the chairman, said, the meeting was pretty much a report meeting, and that's pretty much what it was, just various reports from various subcommittees having to do with the activities that the committee is involved with, and tomorrow night, got planning and zoning, hopefully I'll be able to be there for that.
Okay, very good. And I've only got one thing I'm going to talk about, and that's the Let's Move Award that we're going to receive at the White House next week. I'm going to be heading to N.C. as Gary is as well, so I'll be gone for four days now, I'll be filling in for my absence, and I will give a full report on that when I come back. Gary, do you have anything you want to add before I ask for adjournment?
Yeah, we do have a fat, oil, and grease workshop on 10 to noon on Friday. That involves additional consideration of regulations, implementing the fat, oil, and grease program, mitigation of loading at the wastewater treatment plant. It's important, it doesn't sound real sexy, but if you have a business that you're generating excess amounts of fats, oils, or grease, you might have an interest in coming to that workshop. That is from 10 to noon on Friday.
Okay, I would ask for a motion for adjournment to Executive Session Idaho Code 74-206-1F.
So moved and seconded then.
So moved by Dan, seconded by Art, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will take a five-minute recess, and we're going to adjourn for Idaho Code 74-206-11. This meeting here will not resume at the end of the executive session.